Whereas, inspired by his father's legacy as an amateur boxer, he continues to channel his passion, focus, determination toward his dream of becoming a professional boxer, serving as a role model for young people who pursue greatness through hard work and perseverance. And whereas the city of Springfield takes great pride in recognizing young leaders who uplift our community through their achievements, sportsmanship, and spirit. And Jamil El Chucky Losada truly embodies the values of commitment, excellence, and hometown pride that make Springfield shine. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Springfield City Council hereby honors Jamil El Chucky Losada for his outstanding accomplishments in boxing, academics, and extends heartfelt congratulations and best wishes for his continued success and bright future ahead. Proclamation signed by our city clerk, Gladys Yola, and sponsored by the Springfield City Council. So I'd love for his family, his mom, to come join him at the podium.
If you guys would like to say a few words, we'd welcome you to. Can you get it?
I would like to say thank you for all the support, thank you for my family. And one, our number one supporter is Jesus Christ. Thank you for everything. If it wasn't for my family, I wouldn't be here right now. And if it wasn't for Jesus Christ, or student athlete, or honor roll student, I wouldn't be here right now. And thank you for everything you guys have done for me. And yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Govan would like to also say a few words, counselor.
I just wanted to commend him and translate. He won, am I correct, Counsel Delgado, he won the gold medal in Olympics in Puerto Rico? Is that correct?
Correct.
That's the Medalla de Oro Olimpica. That's a big deal, so I definitely congratulate him and I'm proud that he is a Springfield citizen. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Delgado.
Counselor Perez?
I just want to say felicidades, congratulations. And going to Puerto Rico and competing and getting the gold Olympic is tremendous, knowing how the sport in Puerto Rico plays. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Perez. Any other counselors? Counsel D'Avila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your full name, sorry.
Jamil Losada.
Jamil Losada, that's what I thought. Okay. Jamil, congratulations. Very good proclamation. You know, you've been standing there for a few minutes and you have already impressed me. It impressed me, your vision, it impressed me, your, how center you are. I wish you the best of luck as you progress in life. Never lose sight of Jesus, never. Because he's going to give you the tools and the strength that you need to make it through life. And also, as a Puerto Rican, como Boricua, como Puerto Rican, remember that when all of us, when one of us see, all of us see, you carry around 3.4 million Puerto Ricans on your shoulders, my friend, everywhere you go. Not only that, but also the millions of people that live here, excuse me, the 156,000 people that live in the city in Springfield and the Commonwealth. So wherever you go, you will forever be linked to Springfield and to Puerto Rico. And always, always do you utmost to represent well. Congratulations, my friend. Felicidades.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel D'Avila. Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations. I know you work hard because you're an honor student as well as an athlete. And you're right, none of this would be possible without Jesus Christ. I wish I was in Puerto Rico with you. It's a beautiful country, I've been there three times. But we are honored to honor you and keep it up. We know we're going to see great things from you in the future. And congratulations. Thank you for representing Springfield so very well. We are extremely proud of you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Counsel Santanello?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to commend Counsel Delgado for bringing this forward. We wouldn't have seen this young man today in front of us. And what a wonderful young man with his dedication and hard work. So I'd like to commend him and commend Counsel Delgado for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Counsel Santanello. And Counsel Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Congrats for all the things you've done, particularly since they're in different aspects of life, academic, athletic, spiritual, character. Great job on all counts and for pursuing excellence in so many different ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. And our honorees got, oh, Counsel Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo all of the sentiments and comments that have been made by my colleagues and also to say congratulations and how much we really appreciate all the work you put into that. And thank you to your parents, your mother, your family, those who have been there to support you from day one. We thank you for sharing and coming to you for us today, give us the opportunity to tell us, show our appreciation for the work you've put in. We look forward to seeing you in the future and your future success. And Springfield is always going to be your home. So please, continue to do on your journey. God bless.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. And in closing, I would just like to say that our honoree has been brandished here with some medals and a pretty big belt representing his triumphs in the ring. And personally, I don't, I don't know the first thing about boxing or the athleticism that it takes to succeed at that level, young man, but I can see the poise that you carry yourself with here tonight. And you've impressed me with that. And our city is proud not to call you a son, not just to call you a champion, but to call you a son of this city who will carry a bright light forward for many generations. So we're happy to wish you congratulations on behalf of the entire city and the city council. Counsel Delgado has presented you with the proclamation. And what we'd like to do now is we'd invite you to come forward and we'd love to take a picture with you and that big belt and your beautiful family. All right. Thank you again, Counsel Delgado, and congratulations, Jamil, to you and your family for the tremendous honor. We're going to call the regular meeting of the Springfield City Council to order. Today is Monday, December 1st. The time is 7:25. We are late, but not as late as I feared we'd be. Madam Clerk, would you please start by calling the roll?
Counsel Curran? Present. Present, Counsel Allen?
Present.
Present, Counsel Govan?
Present.
Present, Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present, Counsel Edwards?
Present.
Present, Counsel D'Avila?
Present.
Present, Counsel Brown?
Present.
Present, Counsel Whitfield?
Present.
Present, Counsel Delgado. Counsel Santanello?
Present.
Present, Counsel Click Bruce? Absent, Counsel Perez?
Absent.
Present, Counsel Fenton?
Present. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we please take the first, read the first three items that don't require a vote?
Zone change referral to change the zoning of a portion of property at 390-392 Allen Street from Residence A to Residence C. Another zone change referral, changing the properties known as South Side Boston Road and Rear Side Boston Road from Residence A to Business A, and a referral for amendments to Article 4.
Okay, thank you. Those items have been referred. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Okay. Counsel D'Avila?
Thank you, Mr. President. The General Government Committee met back in September 12 to discuss the appointment of Kevin Coffey to the Historical Commission and of Mr. Geraldine McCafferty to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board. Both matters were referred to be heard today at the city council for approval. Geraldine McCafferty is the current housing director here in the city of Springfield with a great history of serving here at the city of Springfield. And Mr. Kevin Coffey comes, Mr. President, with an extremely impressive background in history. And I would lay him in show himself at the right time. But the committee voted unanimously for appointments of both of these appointments, confirmation appointments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel D'Avila. Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Maintenance and Development had a meeting with the city. Counselor Whitfield was present, Counselor member and part of committee member Perez, Counsel Perez was, and Counselor Santanello. We talked to the city about the different processes and obtaining information on RFP properties and actual jobs and things that people are putting out to bid when it comes to the city. It was a good meeting, a lot of information, a lot of people, a lot of people from outside in the city, constituents showed up. It was really packed audience. There's information that just came out, and we do have the forms and things for anyone who wants to get on the list to get the information of the city homes. But it definitely was a step forward in getting information to constituents who are interested. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Any other counselors with reports of committee? Counsel Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had an audit committee on November 19th. We had a number of items. One of the items went to executive session, but the items before that, really the audit was around athletic gate receipts when it comes to the school department's handling of ticketed events. And so those generate dollars every year for them. And so, you know, the auditor had found different issues in the past, and so this was just a recap meeting, and most of those items or suggestions were followed. There was, in the executive session, which I can't go into detail about, but it was around a cybersecurity review, really in depth, so, but, yep, that's it for my audit committee.
Thank you, Counsel Delgado. Counsel Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met today in advance of these meetings we've had tonight, as it usually does. We had a mixed bag of items. Counselors that were in attendance, I believe, were Counsel Delgado, who was on the Finance Committee with me, Counsel Whitfield, Counsel Perez. I hope I got everybody. And we had, in addition to normal approvals of items like we usually do, there was also a bit of a discussion on the CPA process, because there were two CPA items on there which weren't usually on there. They usually were, they're off-cycle items, which prompted a discussion of the CPA process and money that might be available at certain times in the year. So I think one of the things that came out of that was the hope for a meeting of CPA Committee and some more information that comes out in terms of how they might approve off-cycle applications, et cetera. But overall, we approved all items except the four that were in the executive session. We didn't touch them. And then we approved every other one except one that Counsel Delgado recused himself out of. But generally, it's a good meeting and a lot of good discussion.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Any other counselors with reports of committee? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance of the reports of committee.
On acceptance of the reports, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel D'Avila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Delgado, present? And yes? Yes, Counsel Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce? Absent, Counsel Perez?
I'm here.
Yes.
I'm here.
Counsel Click Bruce, present?
And yes.
And yes. Counsel Perez, yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More than sufficient, committee reports are accepted. Madam Clerk, before we call the next item, we've got quite a few orders and confirmations tonight. Unless any member of the council objects, we do have two items that are otherwise near the end of our agenda pertaining to marijuana. And the solicitors here, we've already spent some time on the marijuana subject tonight. So unless anybody objects, I would entertain a motion to take items 24 and 25 at this time without objection.
Motion so made.
Okay. Any objection to that? Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call item number 24?
Item 24 is amending ordinance, Chapter 275, Article 4.
Mr. Bonacani?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the rest of the city council. Good evening, counselors. This city council originally passed Article 4, Chapter 275 earlier this year. As you recall, we were trying to get our arms around synthetic cannabis, also known as gas station weed, and all of its various forms that were being sold in the city and especially targeted towards children. From then till now, there's been some additional changes to terminology that we'd like to include, just to clean up this, we moved it quite quickly earlier this year. This is language that we think will be more stable and consistent over the course of the time. And also, Beacon Hill is contemplating finally addressing synthetic cannabis. And our information, both the House and the Senate, is this language, although it hasn't been fully endorsed, was passed by the House, not passed by the Senate. But we expect that there isn't real objections to this, to the language from either chamber, it's other issues that have been holding it up. And so what we're trying to get ahead of here today is trying to model the state language into the city's ordinance code so that this will hopefully stand the test of time and be able to restrict what is being sold to children and to adults out there in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Bonacani. Any questions from the council on this? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This is First Step.
On passage of First Steps, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel D'Avila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More than sufficient, First Step is approved. Item 25, Madam Clerk?
Item 25 is amending ordinance, Chapter 245, Article 2.
Mr. Bonacani?
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, through you to the rest of the city council. This is another marijuana or cannabis ordinance request, amending Chapter 245, Article 2, which would include in Section 1 that no marijuana operating permit shall be issued unless there's a certificate of good standing and tax compliance being delivered to Department of Health and Human Services. In essence, Mr. President, we want to make sure that all the cannabis operations licensed in the city of Springfield are compliant in their tax requirements, both with the state and with the city. And this would just require them every year to file something to make sure, to confirm that they have good standing for both us and the state.
Thank you, Mr. Bonacani. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On passage of First Steps, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel D'Avila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More than sufficient, First Step is approved. Okay. Back to the regular agenda, Madam Clerk, item number four.
Item 4 is October Revenue vs. Expenditure Report.
Mr. Burns? Was a one-time standing ovation last time. You're not going to get that one again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm presenting the October Revenue vs. Expenditure Report. This represents the first four months of fiscal year 2026, or 33.3% of the year. Revenue through the first four months totaled 386.6 million, or 38% of budget. Expenditures through the first four months of the fiscal year were 423.5 million, or 42% of budget.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any question from the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call a roll on acceptance of the report.
On acceptance, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel D'Avila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More than sufficient, report is accepted. Item number five.
Item 5 is confirmation of Kevin Coffey to the Historical Commission.
Mr. Coffey, if you're here this evening, we'd invite you to come forward, please. Counsel D'Avila, would you like to introduce Mr. Coffey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, Mr. Coffey, good to see you. Mr. President, as I mentioned on my committee reports, we met on September 12 to discuss the appointment of Mr. Coffey to the Historical Commission. Mr. Coffey, it's a new, fairly newcomer to the city of Springfield, and he has an extremely impressive background. He's a professor, and, you know, Mr. President, I'm sure that Mr. Coffey himself will be, will do better justice in giving his resume. So, Mr. Coffey, if you allow it, sir, floor is yours. If you could introduce yourself, give us a little bit of your background on the Historical Commission. Thank you.
Yes. I was approached by one of the commissioners, historic commissioners, about the fact that there was a vacancy and that the commission was having, well, a challenge in terms of meeting and conducting business. And so I decided that I would nominate myself to fill that vacancy. I have a background in historical archaeology and museums, most recently working for the National Park Service, which I'm sure you know is sort of the historic commission for the country, and have worked with historic commissions in New York and Chicago and San Antonio, Texas professionally. So I do understand the importance of both preserving the historical fabric of the city and ensuring that citizens can operate within that parameter. So I would be happy to serve on the commission and approach it with all due care.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey. Counselors, Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was happy to join the meeting with Counsel D'Avila, and I think Counsel Allen was there. But what impressed me about Mr. Coffey is something he said resonated with me, because I'm like, why do people go so crazy over historic buildings? But he was like, it's the stories that go along with the buildings. And when I was in Virginia, I went on this, like, historic tour, I rode this little thing, this animal thing. It was really cool, but when they started telling about all the stories that went along with the buildings, like when hospitals were segregated and the white population and black population worked together to bring some of the veterans to the black hospital that was kind of like down the street, like, we wouldn't, I wouldn't have known that any of these things happened in these buildings without going on that tour and preserving that history. And so I was just really impressed when he said that. That's what, like, really won me about him. It's not even like, it's just the stories that go along with it, and they have such rich history. And if you knock them down or you change the appearance of them, those stories get lost. So I am so happy to be voting for you today. And thank you for the work that you do and you have done and bring your experience to the city of Springfield.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Any other counselors? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on confirmation of the appointment.
On confirmation, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel D'Avila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More than sufficient, appointment is confirmed. Thank you, Mr. Coffey. Next item, Madam Clerk, number six.
Item six is the confirmation of Geraldine McCafferty to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board.
I think I saw Jerry take a step out for a moment. Is she?
I think she got confused, because she said, "I'll see you later." I texted her, but...
Oh.
I think she took a step out of order, and she got confused. But I think she's doing a navigation.
Okay, well, let's see if we can, let's see if we can get through it. We know Jerry. Counsel D'Avila?
Yes, sir. Before I speak on Jerry, I want to say that I do believe that for the Historical Commission, we still have two alternate seats open on that board. Yes, sir. With Ms. Geraldine McCafferty, we met again on September 12. Jerry is currently the housing director here in the city of Springfield. She was, she's being tapped to serve on the Mobile Home Rent Control. Apparently, they set the rents for the mobile homes. We've got three parks here in the city, I think. And so, yeah, I don't know.
Jerry was here earlier, and I think she was confused when I took the prior items out of order. So it looks like she's left.
So can we?
We can act on it if the council would like. But if any counselors object and would like to wait for another evening when Jerry's here, we would certainly entertain that. Does anybody feel like they're uncomfortable voting tonight?
When the voter, I think the Madam Clerk's trying to...
But if any counselors object and would like to wait for another evening when Jerry's here, we would certainly entertain that. Does anybody feel like they're uncomfortable voting tonight?
When the voter, I think the Madam Clerk is trying to get our attention.
I would beg and request that we confirm her this evening if at all possible, because there's a vote that she needs to take at the next meeting.
Okay, so there is urgency to the appointment? Is there any?
Mr. President, we all know her and know her value, and what a good job she did.
Right, okay. So I don't see any objection to us taking a vote on this tonight.
No objection.
Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on confirmation of Geraldine McCafferty to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board.
On confirmation, Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes, more than sufficient. Geraldine McCafferty is confirmed. Items, let's do seven and eight together, Madam Clerk. These are parking petitions.
Seven is 24-40 Sullivan Street, and eight is 25-41 Orange Street, both for no parking anytime.
Okay, Mr. Velez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Sullivan Street, we install no parking on the north side of Sullivan for 90-day trial is Nado Street. To have parking on both sides and travel lane in both directions.
Okay, what about Orange Street?
Orange, there's a section of Orange between Malden and Vier Street. Trucks parking on the one side, on the north side of Orange, and cars are going to the double yellow line to the other side to avoid the trucks. Maybe it's a landscaping contractor around that area, and we install 90-day trial for no parking in that section.
Thank you, Hector. Questions from the council? Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. So they're asking for the Sullivan Street, they don't want parking on the street at all, ever? I know this.
On one, on one side, on the north side.
Oh, on the north side, okay. And the same thing on Orange Street, just one side?
Yeah, one side, north side is a section for one block. I think it's one block that someone is parking some trucks, and the lane is to Nado for trucks and the travel lane.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Any other questions from the council on the parking restrictions? Seeing none, Counselor Govan?
No, it wasn't on the parking restrictions. I just was gonna have, ask Hector if he saw my email. Thank you, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Who was, who were you gonna ask a question of, Counselor Govan?
If Hector Velas had seen an email, I sent him twice last week.
Yes, about the on the right side?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I saw your email. I'm gonna call you tomorrow about that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just, Hector, you think you can get ahold of me? I'm still waiting on that sign I've been waiting for, for two and a half years.
Yeah, I spoke to the installer, and they said the sign, if they wanna, if you, they move it to, it's gonna be like in front of the door, like the railing, it's a ramp and the railing, and they know how to install the sign right there in front of the door.
It don't have to be right in front of the door, it's a place that can be there. You're supposed to meet me to come down there, I can show you. Just give me a call, if you can, please.
Can we do that tomorrow, maybe in the morning?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Any other counselors? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on items seven and eight.
On seven and eight approval, Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes, more than sufficient. Item is approved. Items seven and eight are approved. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's try to call all the Eversource items together. So nine, 10, 11, 14, and 16, please.
Item nine, Eversource Gas Puritan Road. 10, Eversource Parker Street. 11 is Eversource Gas Montgomery Street. 12, Eversource 121 Memorial Drive. 14 is Eversource Gas on Montcom Street. And 16 is Eversource at 1387 Main Street.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on these items? I think some of these are electric and some are gas. Good evening, sir. If you could please come forward, introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you, President, and council members. My name is Greg Galant. I am from the gas side, the construction manager. And just some of the notes on the three gas projects that we have. These three projects are part of our GSEP program, which is replacing the old cast iron infrastructure, leak-prone pipe. The Puritan Road is about 3,000 feet of new plastic going to be installed. And the other two are Montcom and Montgomery. Those are two project, two projects contingent on each other. The first one being Montgomery is about 5,300 feet of plastic main, and the Montgomery is 3,600 feet of plastic main. And that would be followed up with replacing services to the residents.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak on, any questions on the gas before we talk about the electric? Counselor Whitfield?
It's just overall, Mr. President, are these the services that are considered new growth? I don't know if anyone from finance or accessories can?
Sir, are these applications for new structures that are being built, or are these servicing existing structures?
These are existing.
So it wouldn't be new growth? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Is there anyone here to speak on the electric petitions? Parker Street, Memorial, and Maine?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Matt Casamini, I'm with Eversource Electric.
Hi, Matthew. Please tell us a little bit about these.
Parker Street, I'm not 100% positive on, I wasn't on that one. Memorial is for a pole to add solar to the Munson Building over there. And I believe Main Street is to upgrade the services there after a flood. We need to add a, I wanna say we're adding a vault over there, or some kind of, some kind of handhole.
Thank you. Okay, so can anybody tell us what's going on on Parker Street then? Okay, so counselors, do we wanna entertain a motion to continue the Parker Street item and vote on the others?
I made a motion.
Counselor Davila's made a motion to continue the Parker Street item number 10.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Is there someone here to speak on that item? Just heard somebody speak up.
Yes, Hector.
Okay, Hector, can you tell us something about it?
Yes, they're gonna install a new pole near Fair Oak and Parker Street in 16 acres. There's a cable underground that is damaged, and they're gonna install the pole to replace that cable aerial and abandon the underground.
Is that sufficient to withdraw the motion? Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn. Counselor Brown?
I would just feel a little bit more at ease if we can still move to continue this. There is a severe amount of constituents that's still complaining about power lines, I mean, the power lights, the lights not being on and serviced. I believe that maybe Eversource is maybe backed up or something like that, and I think we should kind of like revisit. I'm curious, when we went back in okaying certain projects and they still haven't been able to get the lights on in the city, so I'm curious to at least talk to Eversource, not just the city, you know, and keep okaying poles and things that are being put up, and we still have a billion poles in the city that still don't have lights on them. So I mean, I would still look to meet with them.
Counselor, is that, is that a motion to refer the Eversource matters to your committee or just the electric matters?
The electric matters.
Okay, so Counselor Brown has made a motion to refer items 10, 12, and 16 to committee. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Okay, Counselor Whitfield?
I seconded because we had a huge meeting with Eversource with a lot of constituents, especially in the Mason Square area, where one of our community workers, Gladys LeBron's cousin was hit and killed, leaving her children and parents. And they said that the lights would be fixed in like two to three weeks, but they didn't tell us that the ones that were gonna be underground or had underground issues was gonna take longer. And so that we, we're telling the constituents two to three weeks based on the information that they gave us, and then they're not replaced. So is this part of the replacing of those lights? Because I don't recall it being on Parker Street, any of those lights that we reported from the Mason Square C3. So I guess Hector is here, Counselor.
Can I, I'm Matt again from Eversource. Can I just say that none of this, the lights have nothing to do, these are individual services that are gonna be fixed and upgraded, they have nothing to do with the city lights. So I don't know how these could be continued. These are totally separate from any light issues.
Yeah, the point that we're making is we want our light issues fixed, and we need to get Eversource in the room so they can make a commitment with fixing the lights that we keep, continue to bring up over and over and over, year after year. Like, when can we get the lights in the neighborhoods fixed so we can not have these accidents where people aren't seen at night? Hector, did you wanna answer?
Hector?
Oops, never mind, he put his hand out, Mr. President. But that's my comment.
Thank you.
No, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Hector.
The 121 Memorial Drive is, has to be with the solar panel that Mason Paper want to install on the building, and they have until January 1st for the rebate, and they just wanna install the pole for, with a transformer to feed the solar panels.
Okay, so am I correct to say, Hector, you're raising that concern about item number 12 because it's urgent? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, the Mason Paper want to install it and want to use the rebate before the 2026.
Okay.
And they have to install the pole and to feed the solar panel on the building.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wondered what the ramifications are of sending this to committee and if any constituents are waiting for services. I agree we should have a meeting, but I also don't think we should penalize people who've been waiting for these services. So I'm not gonna support the move to committee.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, you're saying, Hector, you're saying by January, how many city council meetings do we have before this time? Where, I mean, don't we have a December 8th meeting?
We have a hearings meeting on the 8th, and we have a final regular meeting on the 15th.
So I would give them enough time, wouldn't it, Hector? I don't know that the time, how that works, if they have to?
I can speak on this. There would be, if you did it on the 15th.
Sir, sir, excuse me. Need to be recognized, Matthew. Hector, you have a floor.
Sorry.
Hector, you can continue.
I don't know how that works, if they have to send the paper before January 1st, and they have to be installed, the pole and the system running. I don't know how that works, but they have, take time from the pole to the connection, and I don't know the process to request the, how to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. Counselor Brown, Mr. Casamini from Eversource wanted to be heard, if you were interested in hearing from him.
Yeah, I still had a statement, but I can yield if he had something to add.
Okay, Matthew, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So as far as timing goes, let's say we get this approved on the December 15th, that's, you know, regarding any storm days or anything, because we don't work during storm, that becomes restoration, as well as the fact that the end of December is 100% holidays. I don't think that that particular, especially 121 Memorial, I don't know that it would be up and running before January 1st. They're already, so they've got two sections over there. One section didn't need this, the other section does need this, and they're already kind of at the guideline, at the deadline for the one section that's done.
Is this the only one that, is this the only one that's time-sensitive?
It is. I will say for, for Main Street, that building was flooded, and Aaron, who is not here, he knows about that building as well, and that's kind of time-sensitive as well, but that one's.
So I would just move with Mr. Brown, I would just move to put the ones that are time-sensitive, I wouldn't wanna hinder them. My main purpose is to get, just get Eversource to get back in front of, slow back down, and I hate the fact that constituents and even you guys have to get the brunt of them, you know, not living up to what they said they were gonna do as far as relighting our area. Sometimes we get a pat on the back and they, we don't hear from them. Now we have to still let them know that we are here and they're still concerned. So I apologize for holding you up, but I would just still move to, you know, the ones that are time-sensitive. That's not my goal, to hinder them. My goal, I would, I would agree to let them go ahead, go through, but the other ones, if they're not so time-sensitive, I would like to sit back, sit down, and them come and talk to us as a committee, as a council body, and get some of the work caught up before we start okaying more work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. So we've heard from the electric company, there's three electric petitions. There's number 10 for Parker Street, number 12 for Memorial Drive, and number 16 for Main Street. We've heard testimony that 16 for Main Street is urgent, and 12 for Memorial Drive is urgent. Would you consider withdrawing your motion, Counselor Brown, and proposing a new motion just to refer item number 10 concerning the Parker Street electric to committee?
Don't move.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second, Perez. Thank you.
Motion made by Counselor Brown and seconded by Counselor Perez. So just for purposes of clarification, that is to refer item number 10 to the Maintenance and Development Committee? If there's no further discussion on that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on that motion?
On referral to committee, Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
No.
No, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, item number 10 is referred to the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee. Okay, Madam Clerk, so we now have items nine, 11, 12, 14, and 16 back before the council. These are the balance of the electric and gas petitions. Are there any further questions or comments from the council or can we vote on these? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval.
On approval, Counsel Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, petitions are approved. Madam Clerk, items 13 and 15, please, for Verizon.
13 and 15 are Liberty Street and Cottage Street for Verizon.
Okay, anyone here to speak on this matter? Mr. Velez?
Uh, yes. In Liberty, Verizon is going to install a new pole near the Springfield Plaza and Chicopee to install them and equipment for service of buildings in that, uh, service of business in that area, in that area.
And what about Cottage Street, Victor, uh, Hector?
Cottage, there's a, um, construction, a new construction in 649 Cottage Street, and they're going to update and install new equipment. They're going to stand, oh, they're going to install a new pole in front of their building to upgrade the system on the, in the new construction in that building.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. Any questions from the council? Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say I'd never been happier to hear about new poles being installed since I learned this part of new growth. I just wanted to say that, it makes me happy.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Okay, seeing no other counselors, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on items number 13 and 15, please.
On approval, Counsel Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, petitions are approved. Item number 17 and 18, Madam Clerk, are below our threshold.
17 is library donation, the amount of $200. 18 is Police Address Verification Program grant, and the amount of $75,829.
Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
On acceptance, Counsel Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado? Away, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, grants are accepted. Item number 19, Madam Clerk?
19 is CPA for 37 George Street rehabilitation of fire damaged exterior.
Mr. McCarron?
Good evening, counselors. I'm Bob McCarron, 96 Elliott Street, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And I'm here with a, an off-cycle recommendation from the committee regarding 37 George Street. It is a significant house in the Maple Hill Local Historic District. It was designed by Frederick Newman, who also designed the Court Square Building, recently renovated across Court Square. And it experienced a really severe fire earlier this year. And the owners have approached us. The committee has always in the, has been willing to look at emergency off-cycle fundings. We haven't done many of them, but we felt that this truly was an emergency. The roof is partially burned away, the wall cladding is burned away, the windows are, are missing on the part of the house that experienced the fire. So we are making a recommendation of $300,000 of CPA to do repair and replacement of the roof, of the deteriorated fire damaged cladboard, of the masonry, and of the windows.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. Any questions or comments from the council? Counsel Kern?
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. I, I just had a quick question. What is this home assessed for currently?
That's not a question that I can answer, Counselor.
Would that be in the packet, Mr. President, or?
No, but I can look it up pretty quick if you give me a second. What's the address, Bob?
37 George Street.
Two hundred, $259,100.
And a further question, and we may not have the answer, but would, this, this home was purchased when and for how much?
Yeah, I, I believe it was purchased in 2017. I don't know the amount, and it was a bank foreclosure purchase. So the house was distressed before the current owners bought it.
$85,000.
So $85,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kern. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that it's very important that we, um, preserve our homes here in Springfield, especially the historic homes that we have out here. So I'm really glad that, um, um, the committee, CPA committee is doing this at this time. And it's $300,000. Is that going to be enough to restore the house, or is the, um, the owners, they're having, um, putting in their, their share?
The, the $300,000 should be able to return the exterior of the house to its pre-fire appearance, which is really what's in the public realm. The homeowners will be responsible for correcting the damage that's on the inside of the house.
Okay, okay, thank you, Bob. And thank you to the committee for doing such great work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Govan. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say publicly what I said in the Finance Subcommittee meeting, but before I do, I think there was a question about insurance on the home. There was no insurance?
That is correct. The, there, the owners did not have insurance on the property.
Was there a reason why? Do we know?
I would defer to someone else to answer that.
Is there someone there?
The, the, the owners are, are here, yes.
Okay, can the owner come to the podium, please?
Okay. The owners, um...
The owners are, um, limited in English, so they are conferring with Richie Allen, who has been trying to help them in this process.
Okay, Richie Allen, can Richie Allen come to the podium, please?
Mr. Allen?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council, and thank you, Bob. I, uh, I've been assisting the, the homeowners, Paolo Martinelli and Fabio Rosales. They're here this evening, and, um, there's a prospective contractor, Candido Osorio from Sapphire Construction, he's here as well. If the, if I understand, the question is, uh, why did they not have insurance? There isn't a good answer. They bought this out of foreclosure, um, and, um, you know, for, as, as stated, for the $85,000. And, um, they've been, had been slowly, steadily rehabilitating the interior of the property and trying to improve it. When they purchased it, it was in, it was in a deteriorated condition. Until May of this year, they were living in the property. And, um, they are currently renting in Springfield and are, have been so since sometime in August, I believe. They were in a hotel for a couple of months after the fire, which occurred in May. And, um, uh, they've been eager to return. The contractor has, has the work scheduled to try to deal with the roof before, um, consistent winter weather is upon us. But, um, they recognize that, um, that insurance, um, is a, uh, ordinary part of homeownership. And, uh, I think when this is restored, certainly there are requirements for insurance, uh, attendant upon them, uh, when one receives public funds. So, um, I know they've, they've talked to agents, they've talked to the State Fair Plan, and they are focused on getting this approved and getting in a, in a condition where it's insurable. It currently is not insurable. Historic homes, and this is over 6,000 square feet, historic homes are very expensive, um, to insure, and, um, uh, you know, in its current state, it's condemned. So I think that, uh, I would just urge the council to consider that this is a very valuable historic resource that, uh, I think we all would like to see preserved and, and restored in the city.
Thank you, um, thank you, Ms. Allen. So I'm going to say a couple of things. I do think it's a valuable property, um, but there's other valuable properties in the city of Springfield that have insurance, that still need help, that didn't know about the emergency funds, um, that they could come, because this $300,000 was not used for one of the applications. There's someone else that was privy to that knowledge, but the rest of the residents in the city of Springfield wasn't. I'm going to talk personally about my sister, who does insure her house in the midnight neighborhood. It is a historic property, has insurance and always had insurance, but can't get the porch rebuilt, didn't know about this emergency fund to go to. And so I just think it's a bit unfair for people who are doing what they're supposed to do. I mean, they purchased the house in 2019. From 2019 till now, no one knew about insurance. Did they ever have insurance? I think that would be a good question. And are we going to bail everyone out that don't have insurance for their properties, and then the folks that do, and don't even know about these funds, don't have access to the funds? To me, that's a bit unfair. I'm not opposed to getting people into their homes, but I am opposed to the way that some things are done and how some people are privy to information that others are not. I don't think that's a fair process. Everybody don't know to go to the website to look up CPA funds. I, I haven't got anything in the mail about CPA funds coming available. I just happen to be a city counselor, and I'm aware of this, and, but had I known there was emergency funds, I would have definitely told my constituents to apply. But I didn't realize that. And so I'm just voicing my concern that we have people who are, um, doing what they're supposed to do, that don't have access to this emergency fund, and we have people that are not. And so I just want to voice that publicly. I said it in the Finance Subcommittee meeting, but I definitely wanted to say it in the city council meeting. I, I just think it's an unfair process.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Counsel Delgado? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, I, uh, I did listen to the Finance Committee, I was in attendance, and honestly, Bob, I feel like I just hit a roadblock, uh, and I need you to help me get back on track. So if I understood correctly, Bob, the house was not insured at the time of fire, correct?
The house was not insured at the time of the fire.
Okay, so they're seeking $300,000 to restore the exterior of the house, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this money is coming from the money that was left over from the covenant, issue that this wise body did not approve back then, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so I believe Richie just made a comment that we need to bring this house to the point where it's insurable. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So am I to understand that you guys are asking us to give, to approve $300,000 in something that is not insured?
It's certainly in this case, right now, yes.
My long pause and silence is because if something were to happen, we lose that $300,000, correct? Basically. If there was a subsequent fly, a fire there, God forbid, we lose the $300,000, correct?
Yes, um, I, I would say that CPA contracts, you know, once city council approves it, it goes under contract, and it, and the CPA contract calls that the house be insured during the life of the contract, meaning while the work is being done and the money hasn't been paid out.
I just want to make sure that I understand you, because I think my vote is going to depend on this, Bob. Because have to be, we have to be responsible for the money, and this is not ECMR, I really want to prove this, but... So are you saying that, if I understand you correctly, that part of the process is for the owner to have insurance during construction? Is that what you're saying?
That's what the contract would call for.
Well, how can they, how can they be insured when the house is not insurable?
That, that...
I really don't know.
Yeah. That is a step that we will have to deal with, assuming city council approves it.
The con, the contractor gets insured, not the home itself.
Oh, the contract?
Right.
Okay, eh, so that would be a part of the condition? Is that what you're saying, Bob?
The contracts that CPA has always and carries a requirement for insurance.
Okay, for the contract? Right? For the contract? Insurance for the contract?
I think, I think, you know, I don't have a co, sample contract in front of me, but my understanding is, is it is a contract on the property. Okay.
Mr. President, I do have one more question, but if you indulge me, sir. Richie, do you have a comment with that? Is that, do you want to venture into an answer, or do you feel comfortable giving an answer?
I'm sorry, Counsel, would you repeat the question, please?
No, I was just asking, Bob, that basically we're being asked to give $300,000 to a property that is not insured, that is not insurable. And so my question is, God forbid, something happens during construction under a fire or something, we lose the money, the city in essence loses the money.
Well, uh, to begin, uh, the money isn't granted and drawn down upon. The, the work is performed, and then the contractor is reimbursed. I, I believe that would happen in, in at least two and maybe three segments for the $300,000. So I don't have any experience with this type of situation, Counselor, but it is my understanding that insurance is required per the contract, and at some point, when it's secured from the elements and meets minimal requirements for an insurable property, then, then they would be able to obtain insurance. Now, that may happen sooner rather than later. I honestly don't know, but, um, the, uh, the first phase of the contract is like, of the work, of the scope of the project.
Right, so, so let me, uh, I'm still, to be honest with you, Mr. President, I'm not 100% clear on, on the answer of this. It will seem to me that there might be a loophole there somewhere where the money, the city is going to be at great risk. I agree. My colleague tells me there's a beautiful 28, uh, room Victorian house, and I'm so sorry that, that it caught on fire. And it needs to be preserved, but we also have to be responsible. $300,000 is not a significant amount of money. So I'm still not quite clear on that aspect. But another question, Bob, does this also call for a licensed contractor to be as part of the condition?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Does this also call for a licensed contractor to be involved in the construction, in the rebuild? As part of the condition?
It would have to be a licensed contractor, correct?
And that, of course, is going to be spelled out as a condition?
I, I...
That's going to be spelled out as a condition, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Richie, thank you, Bob. If you think it's appropriate, Mr. President, I personally would love to hear a few words from the owner, I believe he's here, if... I'll, I'll, although if there's a language barrier...
I think they said there's a language barrier, but...
Would you mind my request?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel D'Avola. Counsel Delgado, did you still have a question? No? Yes, okay. Counsel Delgado?
Thank you. And, you know, we did vote on this to push it forward to this full council. Thank you, Richie, for coming up and explaining the piece. Because I was going to ask the question about the reimbursement, because from what I heard earlier, it was they pay the expenses, they get reimbursed. I would also add, I'm not an expert in this, but I recently dealt with this with my mom's house got caught on fire, and she was dropped from her insurance, which is totally different from this situation. But then, from what I recall, she had to get, there's a separate type of insurance for when your home is under construction, which is different from insurance when you're living in the property. So those are two totally different things. So I'm assuming that you guys are going to be required to get, like, construction insurance?
We have construction insurance during the time...
Sir, could you come forward, please?
Yes.
If I may just introduce, this is Candido Osorio from Sapphire Construction, who is the selected contractor, and he's done a lot of work through the CD office and is familiar with procurement and reimbursement and so forth. He can talk about insurance.
And my insurance covers everything during the time I'm in construction, doing the framing, covering up the roof, making it watertight. Once it's watertight, it can become insurable.
So that's what's preventing you? And right now, you're in a race against time right now?
Because of the weather.
Okay. The one thing I do want to say that, and I agree with my colleagues on this, I mean, $300,000 is a lot of money to fix a home, but this is a historic home, so I have to remember that historic homes have a different value, and it costs more for certain specific things. But the piece I want to understand is, so they intend to get insurance after or during construction for the construction phase of it, and then they intend to get, I'm assuming they're going to get insurance when they live in it. And so my last question is, is their intent, because I feel bad that they're out, but their intent is to live in the home and stay in the home, correct?
Yes, that's their intent.
Because the other thing that popped in my mind recently after the discussion is, you know, I don't want to set a precedent that folks who don't have insurance on their houses can then, something happens and they can get the money and then, you know, fix it up and then sell the property, right? Because that was the other piece of it that I started thinking, it's like, all right, you fix it, and then you sell it, and you know, there's a potential to make a profit, maybe, maybe, maybe not. That's not my part to be in, but I just want to make sure going forward that we're keeping in mind the stuff on the insurance piece, which I think is a valuable thing that all my colleagues are raising, so. But with that being said, I do intend to vote to approve this after the presentation that you guys have given. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Delgado. Okay, Counselor Perez?
I was having internet problems. Sorry. I just want to inform for point of information. I have a family that I'm dealing right now, and I'm having a problem with the insurance because they have an issue with their roof, and they don't want to insure them. So I've been working with that family, so you know, for point of information, and probably later on, I don't know, through the management and development. Because this is the second family that I have encountered this month. They're just taking off if the roof is not working or any part of the house, they would not insure them. So I just wanted to inform the council about that matter that is going on right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Perez. Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question was for the actual petition of owners. The language barrier, what language do they speak?
Italian and Spanish.
So they're able to talk to Counsel D'Avola? Wouldn't they be able to talk to Counsel D'Avola?
Well, they do speak English. They're not comfortable with speaking English, but they can.
Okay. So I was just curious, so maybe you can ask him. Are they able to obtain insurance? Are they able to obtain purchase insurance for the home? Because in the past, you know, it just kind of makes me feel a little weary just for the simple fact they didn't have it in the past. And I'm just wondering, are they able to, if everything is said and done, are they financially able to do so? Is that going to be a hiccup for them?
We're trying to get an answer right now, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown, 100%, it's their clear and firm intention to obtain insurance when it's insurable. It's a condemned property now.
Record will be tracked.
And when, if this is approved and Mr. Osorio has his insurance policy to cover work and the structure while the project's in process, and when it gets to the state where it's insurable, as documented by people from the Building Department and others, then their clear intention is to obtain insurance. I will say, I've spoken with them about this several times, and I know that they've called agents, they've called the Fair Plan. I called the Fair Plan. I was trying to understand it better. And it's a very unusual situation. I appreciate the council's consideration of this. It's a very valuable historic resource, and insurance will happen when it's, when we're in a position to legally establish it as an insurable residence. If we don't get to that point for lack of funds or lack of work occurring, the property will sit there in its current condition.
Yes, I'm aware of how that stuff works. I'm very familiar with the contractors and their insurance. I'm familiar with all that. My main question was, once we get everything going, I would just hate for them not to be able financially to obtain insurance. That was my only concern. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering, I was surprised to see a CPA request on the agenda. Are we setting a precedent here with this application?
No, because we set the precedent a couple of years ago. When CPA was formed and the committee decided on how it would operate, it decided, because the state law doesn't dictate how we have to do things, that we would have an annual cycle, but we would consider off-cycle requests if there was an emergency or a market opportunity. Now, at least in my mind, an emergency is a catastrophic emergency, which what this is. And we did come before the council about three years ago with an off-cycle application that involved a project that had received CPA money previously. The developer had failed to perform. There was a new developer who was requesting money. So that was the first time we came before you. This is only the second. And as I said, you know, if it's limited to market opportunities or what I consider to be catastrophic emergencies, you won't see very many of them.
Okay. And Bob, is this request for the funds, is it given all at once or as the process goes on?
We only reimburse as the work is done. No private party gets money upfront. They do the work, we inspect the work, and then we pay for the work.
Yeah, because it's my sense from the discussions that we're kind of concerned that things will be done on this project.
Yeah. If they don't get done, they don't get paid for.
No, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I kind of agree with Counsel Whitfield if people don't know about this, and I'm not sure if a porch would be an emergency. I don't know. But my question is around the family or the owners being, are they going to be able to bring the house back to life? Can they afford to do that? Or is that going to be another stumbling block?
My understanding is they are, at least the husband is in the construction field and certain things he's able to do on his own. The other things, they will have to hire licensed contractors. It may take a while, but their intent is to fix the house and move back into it.
Okay. Because I imagine, now, I want to hear from Ms. Karen Lee, because I know she's on the CPA. She wrote that she could clear up some insurance information. I imagine that they purchased the house and did not have a mortgage, because when you have a mortgage, insurance is required. So I would like to hear, I don't know, Mr. President, if we could have Ms. Karen Lee speak out on that?
Sure. Ms. Lee?
Hi, thank you. All right. Real quickly, as far as insurance goes, our contracts require the homeowner and the builder or the contractor to have insurance. So before the work begins, we need to see those two insurances in place. No funds will be, the city is never at risk for losing the funds because, I think someone mentioned, we inspect the work, then reimburse for the work. So the city is never at risk for losing the funds in a project because the homeowner and the builder are required to have insurance. The second thing is, the CPA does not have an emergency fund, so it should not be called that. There's emergency conditions that may come forward, like this one, as an off-cycle application. But we do not have an emergency fund, and we don't, we wouldn't, like, advertise it out there that we have this money now, because that money would just go back into the CPA reserves and used next year. This was a particular situation. So just wanted to clear those two things up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
And Mr. President, if I may, then that did not clear up my question regarding them not being, not having had the house insured prior to the fire. So I imagine they must have paid cash for the house so that they did not need to have insurance on it because of a mortgage not being existed.
That's correct.
Okay. So that, and then, so that's my question again, and I guess Bob answered it with the family being, hopefully being able to bring it back to life, although it will take some time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Govan. Counsel Curran?
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one, I am going to vote in favor of allocating these funds. This is a property that needs to be restored. It's part of Springfield's history. This is a property that I think the CPA is kind of created for, to bring these homes back. But I think it did raise some questions, just looking at the application. Number one, that, does the CPA have any kind of guidelines or ratio in terms of what a house is assessed for and how much do we provide? You know, we provided, at the last meeting, the William Lloyd Wright House, I think it was bought for a dollar, and I think it was something, we provided quarter of a million dollars. Maybe there should be some guidelines developed in the future that we have some kind of touchstone to work off of. Because as counselors, we do get criticisms, hey, you provided a $350,000 grant to individuals that bought a house for a dollar. What's, what are the guidelines? So that would be something of interest that I'd be interested in seeing. Secondly, just a quick question for Ms. Lee. The condition of the house where the CPA can, will not allocate funds unless it's insured. But is that an insurable house? I mean, how would anyone, individual, get insurance on a house like, if it's not insurable, how does that work? I mean, if you look at the size of the roof, I don't know, would the state insure that? Is it the Fair Plan that insures that? Like, what is the insurance company that insures that, Ms. Lee?
That's one option. The other one is a builder's insurance policy. And so frequently, you see in the city where condemned buildings start to get worked on, they have to have insurance on it. So there are, there are insurance companies or builders' policies that they could get in the meantime until the building gets to a point where it is insurable. So yes, it costs more. It's not through a regular...
The builder's policy will insure the house itself, is what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that clears up a major concern. And I do understand why I wouldn't have insurance if it was bonded foreclosure. A lot of people pay cash, and the insurance companies are not involved. The insurance companies want to insure if there's a mortgage on it. Just one last point. This CPA request is for the exterior only? I mean, is, looking at this, it looks like there's going to be a lot of work in the interior. I mean, is that a hard and fast rule by CPA to help the petitioners? Can they change it to the interior as well?
Well, there are two things, counselors. The committee has chosen as a policy to not recommend for any project in any one funding cycle more than $300,000. And certainly with this project, we believe that the outside will take the full $300,000. The second point is, is, you know, historic resources can avail themselves of CPA. The whole point of a historic resource really is, let's call it, the public benefit. The public benefits by seeing the outside of the house in a pristine condition. It doesn't necessarily benefit from the inside. So we shy away from recommending anything under historic that doesn't deal with the outside of the building.
Understood. And again, it's great that we have petitioners who want to restore a house like this that was, gives the city our reputation, it's the city of homes, it's obviously a Victorian that needs a lot of work, and without these funds, I don't think it happens. So rather than see a vacant lot, I certainly will be voting in favor of this tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Curran. Counsel D'Avola?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick point of clarification. Can we, the contractor, what's his name, what's the company?
Sir, would you please come forward again? State your name again.
Candido Osorio.
Candido Osorio.
Candido.
Okay. Candido, nice to meet you, Mr. Osorio. And what's the name of your company?
Sapphire Construction.
What is it?
Sapphire.
Sapphire Construction?
Yes, sir.
And just to remind the delegates, Mr. Osorio.
Osorio.
Osorio. Oh, no. Osorio. You are fully licensed, right?
Fully licensed. Been in business for 34 years.
An insurer, correct?
Yes. I have $5 million in liability insurance.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you, Mr. Osorio. Bob, quick question for you. I think we're doing this off, off...
Off-cycle.
Off-cycle. But obviously, the owners, Mr. Paola, Mr. Paola Martinelli, the Martinellis, they have a lot of expense here. This would preclude them from coming back for another application, correct? Once we get back on cycle?
Correct. I mean, funding, funding anyone in one cycle does not preclude them returning and asking for money in a subsequent cycle.
Right. Okay. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel D'Avola. Counsel Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to give people a little bit of background, I've been familiar with this property for over 30 years. I won't mention the name of the original owner, but I can remember when this property had a three-car garage, it had an in-ground swimming pool on the property. It starts at 37 George Street, and it's the largest house on George Street, which is in the historic district. But the property extends all the way back down the whole block of Dexter. It sits at the corner of 37 George Street and extends all the way down Dexter Town to Dorn Street. So it is a significant-sized property. The owner, they went 30-some years ago, owned that house plus, I believe, at least two or three other houses. One crossed the street, on the opposite side of the street, and at least two more going down George Street. Maple Street is just a stone's throw. This is one block over just from Maple Street, which everybody is very familiar with, many of the historic properties along there. And many of you may be aware that some of the historic properties... And many of you may be aware that some of the historic properties, especially on the McDuffie's campus site, are also in disarray. We, last year, approved, I believe, for the Young House, $300,000 for the roof, or $280,000, I believe it was, for the roof. This is one of those areas similar to McKnight, but before the McKnight neighborhood became the historic neighborhood that we all think about, it was the Maple High Six Corner neighborhood. And this area is where there's historic homes of Meron Webster and the Wesson Mansion. Matter of fact, the new owner of McDuffie's, or which is now Springfield Commonwealth Academy, last year bought Wesson Mansion, the house that was built by Wesson O'Smith and Wesson for his son. This is a significantly large and very pristinely beautiful property that is, wasn't very, you know, it's just, it was one, just a beautiful house, interiorly and exterior. The city is at no risk by putting this money up, the $300,000, which is a lot of money. But it was in bank sale and it only sold for $80,000 because actually before that, a lady came out of Boston, she overpaid for it. But the house, the gentleman originally 30 years ago that owned the property and owned most of the properties, he had some legal problems. So he started liquidating all of his assets, and this was one of the assets that got liquidated. Somebody overpaid it at that time by a significant amount of money and then eventually had to walk away and left it vacant for many years. And this family came along, bought the house at bank sale and had been doing a submission, again, a lot of work, an interior on the house as well, trying to maintain it. This is one of those situations where all your questions and concerns are legitimate, but the city is at no risk. But if you don't do it, this house will be torn down because of neglect. The way it is sitting now, they've done the best that they can do right now, just to keep the rain from out of there. I was out there at 2:30 in the morning near, you know, watching the fire. And the Springfield Police Department did a wonderful job of just saving what they could. But if we don't do something with it, it can't be insured until they at least put a roof on it. They had to struggle with just to try to get tarps up around it, similar to what you saw with the row houses along Maple Street, the corner of Central and Maple. They had multiple fires there and one of the things that they had to do immediately was get some tarps up there to try to keep the water from running from the roof to the basement. They're in a similar situation. The contractor's come along, he's secured it enough that where it can stand the rain, but winter is coming, where he got a snowstorm coming tomorrow. As soon as the contractor can be assured that he has money coming once the work is completed, this is the only way this property can be saved. There's no way a house like this can be built ever again in the city of Springfield. Once it's gone, it's gone, like many of our great, beautiful mansions throughout the history of the city of Springfield. You take this house and you put it in other parts of the state, other communities, this is a five, six million dollar house. It's just, it's about the location. You can't build it, you can't replicate it, and once it's gone, it's lost. I believe, I was at an event with the, at the Barney House back a couple of years ago, and a former mayor was there who talked about how important our historic houses were and how important it is to those who love and appreciate historic preservation. The role of the CPA, if money was to be used and I, you know, whether it's off-cycle, on-cycle, I don't, I can't dispute in that, I'm not smart enough to get into all that. But this is an appropriate use of the money. It's not going to be wasted. It's not going to be lost. It's going to be, you can't go to Home Depot and buy windows for this house. My colleague asked about, you know, a roof. Most and many of these beautiful houses along Maple Street, if you notice, they got slate roofs. Any of us who have a house and was replaced their roof, you know, my house, I live in an eight-room Victorian, which is fortunately two houses out of the historic district, but my roof was $45,000 on a house that only was worth about $95,000 to $100,000 when I had to pay $45,000 for a roof. If it was the slate roof, which was originally on the house, it would be even more. So this money can only be used on the exterior. There's no risk to the city of Springfield or to the CPA, and they've done their due diligence and it's, it would be a real travesty if we lose this house. If you haven't seen it, please, take a right up Maple Street when you get to the lights or when you just, just at the corner of Maple and where Pine Street connect, take a left and then just drive down George Street. And the route that would, if you come from State Street or from Waller Street, along Maple Street or along State Street, just see which, either side of the street, the beautiful homes that exist there. And it would be a real tragedy and travesty if we can't keep this house upright. And I'm hopeful that everybody, you know, all your concerns are legitimate, appreciate them, and I'm hopeful that you guys would support this as well because it's important for the historic preservation of one of the most beautiful homes in the city of Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. So we talked about this for 20 or 30 minutes in the Finance Committee, and we've talked about it, I don't know how long here tonight, 45 minutes. It obviously needed a lot of conversation and it's a topic worth talking about. But I just want to say that one of the things that came out of the Finance Committee, as I gave in my Finance Committee report, is that some of the questions that have come up tonight need to be answered when we do our next CPA cycle or the next time we, we have to approve CPA expenditures and projects, et cetera. There needs to be some kind of report from CPA about the money that's left over from other projects and how to access that and stuff. That's come up. In addition to all the stuff about this, the beauty of this house, there's also, it's brought, it's brought up a few things that got discussed for over an hour tonight. So I think, no matter how we vote on this tonight, then I think that's something that should be put on the agenda for CPA in the future, that there's got to be more clarity on access to that money and a lot of the questions that we've listened to tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple more questions because I remember.
It's a little hard to hear you, Counselor Whitfield. Could you maybe speak closer to the microphone?
Yeah. Just a couple more questions. I remember when I was asking about CPA before, it was told to me that they want to be sure that there's other funding available for the project. So I just wanted to know if there's other funding available for this project, where it's coming from? Because, just because the exterior of a house, and I'm in the development business, so it's a far stretch to say that the house will be torn down and condemned, it could be sold, it could be bought and go back into foreclosure. There's a lot of things that could happen. Another contractor could come along, purchase the house. There's a lot of things that can happen. I don't want to see anybody out on the street. I also don't want to set a precedence that we're showing favoritism for people who know about the resources that's out there. And it was told to me that other funding would be, would need to be available in, in the other application. So I want to know if there's other funding and where it's coming from. And also, doesn't mean that you're going to get insured just because the exterior of a home is repaired. If there's extensive fire damage on the inside or water damage from putting out the fire, all of that needs to be replaced before the insurance company, in most cases, I'm not saying every case, will insure the home. So just saying we given the $300,000 to fix the exterior is not the full truth that the home will be insured. So I just wanted to point those things out as well. But I would like to know where the other resources are coming from?
I am not aware of other resources. What I am aware of is that they did contact the city's Office of Housing and there are no programs under their supervision that they would be eligible for because the city's Office of Housing is primarily to fix houses that people are still living in.
Okay, so again, it just feels like exceptions are being made because we don't know where the other funding resources are coming from. I think that's important. If we want to really restore this home to the condition that it was before, I'm not questioning the validity of the historic, beautiful property feature of the home. There's a lot of them and there's a lot of them that need a lot of work. And I know that maybe a roof, porch falling down may not be an extreme emergency to some, but if it falls on someone, if it collapsed on someone and someone is injured or dies, it is an extreme emergency to me. I just want to make sure that we are not showing any type of favoritism to one applicant over the other. I was told this several times, that we're looking for additional funding when we approve these type of applications. And I did look in the packet because I looked for it and I just didn't see it. So it's not about the historic feature of this property at all. It's about the process, it's about the principle, and it's about doing the right thing for everybody across the board. And like Counselor Allen just mentioned, we do need to do a better job of making sure when, when there are the CPA meetings that, that it is explained if there's additional funding, that it may be able to be used off-cycle in emergency situations, not that there's an emergency fund, which Karen explained to us a couple of times. I just want to make sure we're not setting precedents, like Counselor Walsh said, to do favors for some and not others. So that is a concern for me. I cannot vote on this because of my principle and because I was definitely myself told, I think by you, that you look for other funding. And I looked through the packet and I just, I don't know how the whole house is going to be restored. And that, that is a concern.
Thank you, Counselor.
No, I have one more question. The second, do, you do drawdowns? Like, so if they fix a portion of it and they come and say that it's fixed, like the contractor, do you give them like $50,000 if they did $50,000 worth of work? How, how are they paid or do they complete the whole project and then they're paid the $300,000 after you see the insurance?
No.
Because all, all contractors have to give liability insurance. Every single one, when they're doing a project, has to have liability insurance to get building permits and everything else. You have to have that. So this isn't a rare occasion, this isn't special, is what all contractors have to do. But how are we going to know if the house is insured after? So are you paying back the contractor or are you paying once the owners get the insurance?
So the contract, the contract will require that the homeowners have the property insured?
And do they get the whole $300,000 at that point or are they getting drawdown?
No, no, no one gets money upfront.
Okay. But do they get a drawdown?
They get a contract and then, for example, they will call and say the contractor has finished the roof and the roof costs $70,000 and Karen and I go out and inspect the roof and, and then we issue a payment to reimburse them from the roof. And they may call a month or so later and say the clawboard has been replaced. So it, it, it's a phased dispersment, but only after the work has been done and been viewed by us.
Okay, well, I appreciate that explanation. The part that, the reason I can't approve this is because there's no additional funding. It wasn't insured since 2019. The house was purchased in foreclosure for $85,000. They had $85,000 at the time but did not get insurance. And now we're saying, okay, it's okay, just because it's a beautiful historic property. That, there are other people that can restore this home, there are other people that even would be willing to buy it. It's not the end-all, be-all if this particular property isn't restored by this particular contractor. It's just that this contractor got wind that there was this $300,000 available, went to the appropriate parties to get it, and now it's in front of us, being approved. I just don't think that's a fair and open and honest process, and for that reason, I will not be going on this.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. I would like to say a couple of things on this. So in the absence of the Vice President, Counselor Edwards is the longest-serving member here. Counselor Edwards, do you mind coming forward? Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to say, I know, I know we've been at this for a while, and I want to acknowledge and thank Bob and the volunteers on the CPA committee who really do incredible work for the city of Springfield. Sometimes it's a thankless job, but if I could speak bluntly, we wouldn't have a CPA if it wasn't for Bob McCarroll. He has dedicated decades of his life to historic preservation and community preservation matters across the city. And Bob, I just want to say personally, thank you for that work. I know this, this particular project is being met with some understandable questions, but to you and Karen and the other members of the board and the really great work that you do, thank you for that work. And I wanted to just say that at the outset of my comments and validate that. I apologize that some of this was covered earlier, but I didn't, I didn't catch some of these items. What caused the fire?
We don't know really what happened because when the firemen, they came, okay, they assumed that the, the fire was because a candle unattended, which was not like that because there was not a candle unattended. It's true that I had a chapel, okay, in the house, okay? And all the candles were with the battery, you know, that they fake.
I see.
So we don't know really what happened.
Were you home? Were you home at the time of the fire, ma'am?
Excuse me?
Were you home at the time of the fire?
Yes.
You were home.
I am the one that, it was lit, it was lit, because I don't sleep a lot, so it was sleeping and I heard, I heard noises. So I went in the front of the house, I saw like, I thought another house was, that it was fire because it was a reflection of the fire of my house. So I, I didn't think, so I, I woke up in the morning, I, I told him, I hear noises upstairs. So we went in the stairs and there was a lot, we could not go through because it was so warm.
Thank you very much. We're glad that, we're glad that you were safe, certainly, in that, in that tragedy. Do we have any sense of how much has been spent so far on the house since the fire?
Since the fire or before the fire?
Since the fire. How much have you spent?
I don't understand. I'm sorry. No, I understand the question, but you're asking how much money we spend?
Correct, after the fire.
Okay. After the fire, we, okay, we cleaned up everything alone, me and my husband, okay? We did everything we could to clean it up, all the mess after the, the fire, okay? And we, we put the wrap on the house, okay? And we, that's it, right?
Okay.
We, we kept the house clean.
Okay. The reason is because we don't have a lot of money. We spend all the money in the house, fixing the house. That's why we don't have insurance because we try to get, so we get in better situation to get insurance of the house because spend the, we pay the house cash and then after that, we fix the house outside because the city was bad and inside also because it was, that house was demolished when we bought the house. So the city was in top of us, every, every month, we got, we got to fix the house. So we spend a lot of money also working outside and inside.
Thank you. Just a couple, just a couple other questions, and maybe these are better, better for Bob, but whoever would like to answer them. Do, do we have any estimates for the total cost of reconstruction, including the interior?
I, I'm going to defer to the contractor in terms of, my understanding is there's still, there's still about several hundred thousand dollars of interior work to be done after the exterior work.
Yes, sir. Could you tell us a little bit about the estimate that you've got for the interior work?
So when the homeowners started the CPA process, they were working hard to obtain estimates so that they could properly inform the CPA committee. And Paula found some, two contractors that, that provided estimates after walking through the property.
Yes. Yes.
And they were several hundred thousand dollars higher than 300. And understand to contemplate an interior as well as exterior work. The request for for the approval of the 300 relates strictly to the exterior work.
But we don't have we don't have a estimate for the balance of the work for the interior.
No, we don't.
Will you? Would you be the contractor doing the interior, sir?
Well, yes, and my subcontractors and my carpenters, too.
Do we have any sense of, like, I mean, and Counselor Whitfield sort of hit on this, sources and uses for this? I mean, like, so if we think that it's going to cost more than $100,000 more to do the interior, where where is that money going to come from?
I don't have an answer for that.
Does the owner, I mean, you said that you're you're sort of strapped for resources here. How are you? Have you tried to qualify for a mortgage for that type of interior improvement?
So what I would suggest is that when they purchased the property in 2017 or 2018, they were performing a lot of the work themselves on the interior.
Steadily.
And slowly but steadily making it a more habitable house. And I think it's fair to say that with Fabio's skill as a carpenter and and other people he knows, as well as Candido or Sorio, that they'll they'll get to a point where they can manage the interior one way or the other.
Once it's watertight.
Once it's watertight, that's the.
And they have insurance, then they can go from there.
We we have talked about possible, you know, mortgages or to to assist with that process. But they'll go at a pace that they can manage, as they did, you know, this would be round two. And.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is probably for Bob or maybe Mr. Coffey. Thank you for sticking with us all night. You get all these great historic comments. You're not on the board. Well, maybe you are on the board now. You think you are, as of tonight. Are there restrictions on the historic rehabilitation on the exterior being? I mean, basically, I guess what I'm getting at is do they have to build it identically to the way it was before the fire?
So there are probably two answers. I'm going to give you the CPA answer. The state law that governs Community Preservation Act requires that a historic resource helped by CPA must do the work according to what's called the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. And this is the gold standard for rehabilitation. We contract with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission through their preservation planner, Shannon Walsh, to for every historic resource that CPA helps, she needs to look at the work and make sure it meets those standards. So the answer is, yes, CPA law requires it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Counselor Govan?
I move the question.
Question has been moved made in second. Are there any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, I'm moving to question.
On the motion to move the question, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
The vote is sufficient. Madam Clerk, any other questions? Madam Clerk, we call the roll on the passage of the CPA funding.
On the passage of the order, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
My vote is yes, but my I just want to explain that my brother has done an awful lot of work to help this project with no financial interest, just the goodness of his heart to help these people. So I'm going to vote yes. But I want to be clear that I thought about recusing myself, but I want to make sure it gets the votes. So there's no reason to recuse myself. So I my vote is yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
No.
No, Counselor Whitfield?
No.
No, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez? Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
No.
No.
Madam Clerk?
Sufficient votes.
It passes. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Next item, item number 20, please.
Item 20 is CPA order for rehabilitation and reuse of the Gun Block Building at 477 State Street.
Okay. Mr. McCarroll?
Sorry, this is a recommendation from the committee. The Gun Block, which is the third oldest or one of the oldest commercial buildings in Springfield on the corner of State and Walnut, has been vacant for many, many years. In 2023, the council approved a $250,000 CPA grant to the new owner at the time, which was a corporation out of Connecticut. And it was for roof repair, masonry repair, window replacement, facade work, stabilization work. That owner never performed any work, never got any money, never even went under contract with with the committee, and in fact, sold the property last month to a local nonprofit, which approached the CPA and asked whether we could transfer the money that had already been approved for the work that had already been approved to the new corporation. And the answer was, we'd be happy to do that, but City Council is the one that had to do it. So we are before you with a financial order to, in a sense, give them the money that was authorized two years ago.
Thank you very much, Bob. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this is one of those, this one should be very easy because we've already really approved the money. All we're doing now is changing the developer. It was unfortunate that the project didn't move forward before. We have approved and money has been approved through the city. And many years passed, I believe, for those of us on the council for more than a few years, remember that developed Springfield once had control of the building. They did some exterior work to keep it from falling down. It's a difficult building to get done. But I'm very confident in the developer. She's a local developer. She's one of our homegrown residents and constituents. She's put a good company together. She's surrounded herself with some good people. And she's putting forth a good project in process. And one of the first things she needs to do is to get this roof done. And this money will go to get the roof done, as you already heard from the previous comments. There's no loss or risk to the city. The money will be dispersed as the work is done. And she has some wonderful plans on the future of developing this along the State Street corridor. It's important that we approve this, and I'm hopeful that my colleagues would agree.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Edward. I mean, thank you, Mr. President. This 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 property borders my area. I've spoken with the petitioner. I do know the petitioner. This is kind of what the city council have been complaining and crying about, having qualified people other than these big corporations getting properties. So I'm very much in favor for this property. I know for this project, I know I know the young woman who's who's doing it. I know her family. She's very well respected. This is something that I look for more projects like this. So this really, to me, isn't a no brainer. You know, she's she's very dedicated in the community. I can say that I'm very proud that she's gotten this far with this project. And I definitely will be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to congratulate Janay on the building and its uses. But I also want to be fair and ask, do you have additional funding in place or that you're going after for this property?
Ms. McDonald?
Good evening, everyone.
You could just introduce yourself, please.
Sure. My name is Janay McDonald. I'm a Springfield resident. I also live in a historic district and a historic home in the McKnight neighborhood. And so very happy to now be a homeowner, well, been a homeowner of a historic home, but now also a historic building. So please excuse my voice. I enjoyed my cousin's wedding a little too much this past weekend. And I had the honor of emceeing the festivities. But to your question, Counselor Whitfield, yes. So attached to the application, there should be, unless I forgot to attach it, an award letter from Mass Development. But that piece is to do the build out of the internal piece, because a part of the project includes a community cafe and artist bar on one side of the commercial spaces. The first floor has enough room for two commercial spaces. The other side of that property is actually going to be the home for our community learning center, where we're able to have office space and do digital literacy labs. We do have, we're currently in conversation with a nonprofit organization who wants to partner with us to assist with the build out of the digital literacy lab. We've also recently applied for $750,000 for mass housing to do the affordable housing units on the second and third floor. We also know that we'll be eligible for the historic tax credits. And that deadline comes up January 15. So we intend on monopolizing on that. And there are a few other grant opportunities that'll be coming up between January and early spring, underutilized property funds, and some other things. I also have contingency plans in place should we not get any additional funding. But I think the important piece about this is securing the outer facade, giving part of the State State Street corridor a facelift. This property is also around the corner from across the street from several education institutions, around the corner from a public education institution. So this is a place that I drive by daily because I'm a daughter of the community. But our children have to walk past this place to go to school. And so I think that this is a great start, considering that there are other developments happening along the State Street corridor to give the community a facelift.
Thank you for that answer. Great answer. Thank you for doing your due diligence. Also, CPA is coming up again. And as you heard Bob McCarroll say earlier, you can apply for the same type of funding more than one round. I just want to thank you for your due diligence on this. And I also just wanted to mention, just because people are questioned doesn't mean we're questioning your character. We do know that you work hard. We do know that you put in a lot of time as volunteers. We still have to do our due diligence as city councilors working for the public and ask these specific questions. So it's not attacking anyone's character or the work that you've done or any of that type of stuff. I think I said that before, because it does come across that way sometimes, but it's not really anything personal. I'm just trying to figure out all the situations so in the future, we know how to handle them accordingly. So thank you, Janay, for that piece of information. I definitely will be voting yes on this one.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to extend, one, you know, just congratulations to you, Janay, on on purchasing of the building. But also, thank you for taking this on. I know we had another developer who who dropped off for whatever reason. And this is the second oldest building in the city of Springfield. And so the fact that you're willing to take this project on and bring that building back to life, as you mentioned, you know, across the street from the historic campus of STCC. But also, it's an important corner. And I too drive have driven by this this corner. I've seen it boarded up for years. And so the fact that you're bringing it back. And then the other piece, which is post, once this is all done, is the fact that you're doing a digital digital literacy lab, you know, which is also important as the Chair of the Digital Equity Working Group. Mason Square and that area is one of the areas that significantly needs that help alongside other neighborhoods in the city. So the fact that you're going to have somewhere for for children, for seniors, I don't know if it's a specific demographic, but there are a number of folks that can utilize that. So and then just thank you again to the CPA, because without this funding, here's another important historic building that could be lost had had it not been for for this funding. So thank you again, Bob, and for Karen and the team on that. So but I'm looking forward to this building getting revived and adding another sparkle on that corridor. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Delgado. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. And good luck, Janay, because I think, am I on mute?
You are not. We can hear you. Counselor Walsh has left. Counselor Santinello?
Yeah. Bob, what what kind of vetting process did we use the first time when the other individual got this money, you know, allocated and then walked away from the project? What was it, over a two year period?
Well, you know, the award was voted in 2023. And the committee would be, you know, continued to ask for information for in order to move forward with the contract. And the the owner just wasn't providing the information. And then he told us he was thinking of selling the building. So there was, you know, a series of delays. Obviously, when the committee recommended the project back in 2023, we did it based on the need of one of the oldest buildings left, you know, remaining in Springfield. Sadly, that developer didn't pan out.
Right. And that's like two more years that the building's been left derailing.
Correct.
Right. I wish everybody in the future well on this project. It is one of the oldest buildings in the city. And again, I wish I wish the developers well.
Thank you, Counselor Santinello. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you. I don't know how late it is, but I somehow got disconnected and found the link. But I just want to say, first of all, I'm so happy that somebody is finally doing something about this block. Because not only do you have important institutions there, but we also have a federal park in the same vicinity. We have the Springfield Armory. And think of how many people come up State Street to go to the Springfield Armory. They turn left, they see a beautiful institution, they turn right, and they probably want to turn around and go somewhere else. So I think it's wonderful you're taking this on. I think it's great. There's a woman leading this detail. And I wish you great luck.
Thank you, Counselor.
And I hope I can stay connected.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question more than a comment. I have to join my my colleagues in saying that I'm also glad to see that this historic area is going to be rehabilitated and that it's going to be brought back to its grandiosity. Not only do we have federal park right across it, but we also have Boston Road. Boston Road is named Boston Road not for coincidence. Boston Road, if you begin on Main Street and Boston Road, and you keep going straight, you end up in Boston. It's my understanding that it was used during the Civil War to bring armaments, men, and weapons during the Civil, excuse me, during the Revolutionary War. And it's my understanding that it was also used for some of the equipment that was used during the Battle of Bunker Hill. So it is absolutely an appropriate use of CPA money. I also want to say, Ms. McDonald, thank you. Because not only did you gave us your plans, but you also gave us contingency plans that you have in place for this project, which tells me, Ms. McDonald, how serious you are over this project and that this project is going to be in good hands with your hands. So I will be thrilled, Ms. McDonald, to vote in favor of this. And I wish you, I wish you on your foundation, the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Govan? Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that this is a great project, and I'm really excited to see what Janay McDonald does with it. I'm looking forward to seeing it open again. I remember when it used to be Gun Square, so I'm dating myself, and we used to go, I think there was a bar or a club there, and we used to go partying there. I know that won't be happening here, but I think it's still going to be a good place for people to go and hang out. The kids are going to learn a lot, and I think the city is going to learn a lot from that property. So I'm definitely going to be voting in favor of this project. And again, the CPA, the work that you guys do is amazing. I'm always so impressed by it. I love paying that CPA tax. That's the only one I like to pay, as I've said before. Thank you, Bob and Karen. Oh, and the new member of the CPA, or the Historic Commission. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Okay, seeing no other counselors. Madam Clerk, can we please call the roll on the order?
On approval, Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient. Order is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a few more items, counselors. I know it's getting late. Madam Clerk, item number 21, please.
Item 21 is a transfer on FY25, certified free cash to the pension reserve.
Ms. Bono?
You can just vote yes on all three, and I can vote.
One at a time.
Okay, counselors, as you know, about a week and a half ago, we were certified our free cash amount for this year, and it was $18,614,299. Every year after we certify cash, we come before you and ask you to appropriate, to put 10% into the pension reserve. And that is, we know our pension liability goes up every year in the budget, and that is just money we can set aside to use if we have to balance a budget. This year, we did use $2 million, as you recall. So I'm asking the counselor to approve the transfer for 10%, which is, let me get the exact number, $1,861,429.90.
Thank you, Ms. Bono. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval of the transfer, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient. Transfer is approved. Item number 22?
Item 22 is a transfer FY25, certified free cash to the OPEB trust.
Ms. Bono?
Again, counselors, this is a commitment that the city council has made to put 10% of all our free cash into the OPEB trust fund. It's a liability the city's going to have to start paying off once we have caught up on our pension.
Questions from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient. Transfer is approved. Item number 23?
Item 23 is a transfer for FY25, certified free cash to the COVID-19 fund.
Ms. Bono?
The city received the emergency authorization to deficit spend during the COVID pandemic. The city also received in the past emergency authorization to spend in the tornado, the fire that burned down Chestnut Junior High, and the October storm. After all the expense, once all the expenses, and the city applied for reimbursement through FEMA and MEMA and any other sources we could find, we finally received our last reimbursement September, this past September, and there is a balance in that account that has to be covered by the city. We're required to fund that before we can set the 27 tax rate. And now that we have free cash, I'm asking you to transfer $2,125,128 to clear up this fund that was caused by funds that weren't, expenditures that weren't reimbursed by FEMA or MEMA.
Thank you, Ms. Bono. Any questions or comments from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient. Transfer is approved. Okay, items 24 and 25, we took earlier. Our last item, Madam Clerk, item number 26.
Item 26 is the online safety resolution.
Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm bringing this resolution forth. A group reached out to me, and there is a, an act at the, in Washington, DC. It's called the App Store Accountability Act, and it's going to the Committee on Health, Energy, and Commerce. And I'm going to read the resolution. It's regarding online safety for our teenagers and young people. So it says, "Whereas, the mental health and well-being of young people in Springfield is a priority of the city, and whereas social media use is widespread among teenagers and young adults and is a key factor in their mental health. And whereas social media can provide needed online communities for marginalized young people, but can expose them to cyberbullying, harmful contact, content, and digital addiction. And whereas parents deserve simple tools to help keep their children safe online and to know what apps their children are using. While teenagers deserve privacy in their online interactions, and whereas age verification is a key tool to help people, help protect minors from harmful online contact and unwanted contact. Whereas it is likely safer for parents to provide age verification information to one of a few regulated app stores than to a large number of app developers and tech companies. Whereas local or state-level efforts may not be as effective as federal efforts in regulating technology companies, while state-by-state regulatory differences may be difficult for parents to navigate. And whereas legislation has been introduced to Congress in the App Store Accountability Act, HR 3149, and S 1586, requiring app stores to verify user ages before allowing app downloads, and requiring parental approval for minors to download apps. And whereas this legislation does not create government control of content moderation or infringe on our freedom of speech or expression. And whereas the Springfield City Council considers the legislation a safe and effective way to help mitigate the risks of the online world to young people, and now therefore be it resolved that the Springfield City Council expresses its support for federal legislation requiring age verification for app downloads and personal devices and parental approval for minors' app downloads, and respectfully urges the Massachusetts Federal Delegation to favorably consider such legislation, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to both Senate, U.S. Senators from Massachusetts and to the U.S. Representatives for the First Congressional District of Massachusetts for their consideration." So this is just a resolution supporting that app to protect our teenagers and young people from social media. The apps or applications that you get from like the App Store, and that's what they want to sort of regulate, and just asking for age verification that parents will give as opposed to the young people. Open for questions or comments.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Santanello?
Counselor, what is the, if you know, what are the ages, what are the ages they're talking about for minimum, minimum age for download?
So these are anyone under the age of 18, 13 to 18 specifically.
Yeah. And I commend you on this, because cyberbullying, as you're aware, because that's your field, it's leading to suicides across the country. And every time you pick up a paper and you see that somebody's been bullied, and the next thing you know, they're dead. So I commend you, and hopefully this will be a step in the right direction to reduce, to reduce that horrible outcome.
Agreed. Thank you.
Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Counselor Govan. I commend you also on bringing this resolution forward. You know, at C3, we always bring in the youth, and last year at our event, this is exactly what we talked about, and the struggles that the teens are going through. So thank you for bringing this forward, and please add me to the resolution.
Thank you.
I'd like to be added also.
Madam Clerk, can you please add Counselor Santanello, Walsh, and Whitfield to the resolution? Counselor Delgado?
Thank you.
I just want to also commend Counselor Govan on this resolution here. You know, I sit there and think of a time before we had all this, all these tablets, all these social media, and, you know, I'm a millennial, and I was actually part of the kind of first group of folks that actually signed up for the MySpaces, the Facebooks of the world. And, but I also know what it was like before to not have that and to be able to go outside and play with my friends and not be distracted or sucked into it, but also now understanding the impacts that it has on our children and, as was mentioned, cyberbullying. So this is something that, you know, needs to continue to be looked at and studied, because our young people, a lot of them are being raised by these tablets, and they can click on a whole lot of stuff that sometimes parents don't even know. I mean, my kids are, you know, my daughter has a tablet, although we check their stuff pretty regularly in my son's phone, just because you never know. You never know what they're looking into, you never know what other kids are doing. And so I applaud you on this effort and bringing this to our attention, because it's definitely something that's impacting our kids when we don't know it, and mental health has been a huge challenge. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I also like to be added to that. Sorry.
Counselor Delgado would like to be added? Any other counselors? Counselor Kern?
Yes, if you could add my name as well. And just, Counselor Govan, I never got cyberbullied until I became a Springfield City Councilor. So that's how I got acquainted.
You're past the age limit.
But I want to thank Counselor Govan for her commitment to this issue. It's really important that you raise it, especially here in the city of Springfield, and that your efforts here of making this issue well-known is going to protect young people and our schoolchildren. So congratulations for your work on this, Counselor Govan, and I'm proud to co-sponsor it with you.
Thank you, Counselor Kern. I think, is there any counselor that would not like to be added? Okay, so let's add, let's add everybody. Anybody else? Counselor Davila?
Yes, I just want to compliment as well Counselor Govan, and express that not only is this necessary, not only for the cyberbullying, but it's also, Mr. President, by understanding that a lot of these apps are used by sexual predators that specifically go after minors. And so this is a sensible piece of legislation, and I will be happy and honored to join it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Any other counselors? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the resolve.
On approval, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown? Counselor Brown? Away, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient. Resolve passes. Any more business, Madam Clerk?
There is not.
Okay, counselors, that will conclude our meeting this evening. Our next meeting is scheduled, it's a hearings meeting for December 8th, 7:00 p.m. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.